I think this would be a good time to commence the meeting of state and local government, of which you are a member. Representative Ramos. And uh this being budget season and this being your inaugural run. And Beacon Hill and the state budget and state issues. I just wanted to open up the committee on state and federal government of the Springfield City Council. And to get some of your thoughts on the budget or just anything you'd like to share. Uh with the committee and and the council on the the comings and goings on Beacon Hill right now.
Um sure, thank you. Really appreciate it. I'm getting a little bit of feedback. As I'm speaking, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm hearing that too. How are you Orlando?
Hi, how are you?
I'll place my uh phone on mute.
Okay. How's this? Is that better?
That's perfect.
Then that's a little better. Yep. Okay, so um so yes, thank you for uh. Thank you for putting this meeting together. Um yes, it's great to be here. Uh to talk a little bit about what's happening at the state level. Uh as you know, this is my first term as a state representative. It was my first. Uh go around with the with the house budget, um which was. Uh a great budget. I commend um the speaker and the chairman of ways and means for. A budget that addresses all of the concerns and needs of the people of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, especially during a pandemic. It was amazing that we were able to accomplish um so much in this budget. Despite the challenges of this pandemic. Uh the Senate is currently uh debating their budget uh this week, uh but the House completed um our budget a couple of weeks ago. A lot of great things uh coming to Springfield. Um I think the Springfield delegation did an excellent job advocating for. The needs of the local um not pro- nonprofit organizations and municipalities. To address the needs uh that we're facing uh during these challenging times. Um I specifically was 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 uh able to um secure uh some funding for. For STCC um as well as um the International Neighborhood Council. Um and uh the Women's Fund of Western Massachusetts, as well as Vietnam Veterans of of America, which. Um uh serves a lot of veterans here in the city of Springfield through the bilingual veteran services. Of Springfield and um. And yes, we did um, you know, the 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 uh again, the Springfield delegation did an excellent job advocating for. Uh resources for Western Massachusetts and for Springfield. And I'm very satisfied with the with the outcome. Um we're still not um. Uh as I mentioned, the budget is still not finalized as it is being debated by the Senate now. And um and then from there, it'll go to conference committee where we'll we'll have a final uh final budget to um to allocate for the Commonwealth.
If I could, Orlando, this is a very unique uh budget season for you. I know this is your inaugural budget. And to do most of that work from Zoom, uh we really have to commend you. Uh it's really a unique. Uh part of Massachusetts state history that the legislature was able to function so well in the Zoom format. And uh that the city of Springfield uh is gonna get so much uh aid from Beacon Hill. Uh through your advocacy on Zoom. And uh I'm sure you went in there as an advantage as you had a year in the city council where we were conducting meetings uh in Zoom too. You're a pro at this. I understand you have another bill that you're uh working on in regards to uh. Uh motorbikes here in the city of Springfield. If you just, it's always good to get your first uh legislation out there to the general public and certainly. Uh the media does watch these videos. Uh and so if you want to just maybe uh share with us uh. The stuff that that aspect of what you're working on and and give us an update to committee, that'd be terrific.
Sure, um but first of all, yes, uh you know, the Zoom has has really uh been challenging and the fact that we've been able to accomplish this much. Um on the city council and at the state level through virtually, right? It's it's been uh it's been it's been great. Getting that feedback again on the. Sounds. Let me let me place myself on. Uh but yes, I do have a a home rule petition um that has been proposed at the state level. Um in regards to dirt bikes, the what the home rule petition would do. Is it's similar to a bill that was passed by the city council in the early two thousands. When the city was facing uh many challenges uh with drag racing. And uh with the what the uh city council did was they passed a home rule petition that would allow police officers to confiscate. Um vehicles after their owners are caught uh drag racing those those vehicles on on city streets. And uh the home rule petition for dirt bikes is similar in in in. Um which it will allow uh the Springfield Police Department to confiscate um a dirt bike or an off highway vehicle. Um if they're found to be violating the law on a public road. So we all know that, you know, uh dirt bikes and off highway vehicles are illegal. They're um. It is illegal to to ride them on public roads. It is legal to to ride them on private roads um or a private property. So um so again, there there are legal ways to to participate in this sort of activity. Uh but there are those people who choose to not follow the law. So. Uh so if this home rule petition is approved, then it will allow the Springfield Police Department to confiscate those vehicles. And the intent would be to have those vehicles crushed. Uh because uh what often happens is that these vehicles are taken away from, you know, someone who. Uh who stole the vehicle and we were unable to locate the the original owner. And then they end up being sold at auction and then recycled and then they end up just they just end up back on the streets. So. So the the goal will be to get them off the streets completely uh by confiscating them, taking possession of them and crushing them.
Well, I commend you for your efforts and certainly now an issue with all the dirt bike riders here in Springfield. Not only for uh the pedestrians, but also for the the riders, the young kids looking for an outlet. And uh but we gotta make sure that uh when they get out there, there's a a level of safety as they are on these uh dirt bikes. That are going quite fast up to a hundred miles an hour. Uh one of the interesting things that you did, uh Representative Ramos. Is that you've worked with the Connecticut delegation and legislators in Connecticut, and I think that's terrific. As there's such a uh commonality here in the city of Springfield. Up and down the I ninety-one corridor, uh much more so than I would respectfully suggest than the city of Boston. I think uh our economic challenges here, as well as in Hartford, Waterbury, New Britain, really reflect. Uh the challenges of a mid-sized city uh that's just trying to uh gain its economic uh mobility again. And so you really reached out uh to the uh Connecticut Legislative Delegation. And uh if you could just share with us uh your thoughts on that. Um and do you plan to do so uh in the future as you uh conduct further uh public policy?
Yeah, so that that is that was in regards to a local ordinance um for. Uh to prohibit gas station for selling gasoline to um uh to illegal dirt bikers. Um but again, um it 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 came back to the conversation around confiscation of these vehicles. Uh which is the the state uh piece of legislation that I that I found. Um the state of Connecticut or the municipal, the the legislators in the municipality where I was able to. Uh have conversations with they they were able to do that through an ordinance, um which did not need um uh state approval. Uh but again, because the laws are different here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we did need to do do this through a home rule petition. And uh and unfortunately, that home rule petition again was stalled. Last year because of the COVID pandemic. However, this year I I anticipate that it will be moving forward. Um we have the support of the majority of the Springfield delegation, if not all of them. I haven't checked recently as to how many. We have, but I believe we have um at least most of them um sign on to that bill. And uh and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get it through and uh and and have it enforced by the time that we hit peak seasons of. Uh illegal dirt bikers, which is really approaching rather quickly. So. Um I'm hoping to have both the local ordinance and the home rule petition uh done uh before uh by 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 this summer.
Well, I can see uh on our Zoom call that we are joined by award seven city councillor Tim Allen. I want to welcome my councillor Alan to this discussion. Uh one of the reasons why I brought up your advocacy. With uh members of the state delegation in Connecticut as a way to improve upon uh. Public policy here in Springfield and on the state level is the idea behind. Using state offices to reinvigorate mid-sized cities such as Springfield really kind of originated in Connecticut. Uh in nineteen nineties, uh there was a governor, uh a Republican governor by the name of John Roland. And uh he he came uh the mayor from the mayor from the city of Waterbury. And what he recognized was all the State Department buildings in the state of Connecticut were really situated around Hartford. And he really advocated for why. Do not share the economic boost and activity as well as realize the economic gain. Of going to these mid-sized cities where the cost of commercial real estate is a lot cheaper. And his administration during that time really uh focused on creating the University of Connecticut. In uh at Waterbury, uh they focused on bringing the the Transportation Department. Uh outside of Hartford uh to a smaller town. Uh I believe it's Weathersfield. Uh and and really spreading where it was feasible and spreading where it made sense. State agencies throughout Connecticut. And so all the towns of New Britain and Waterbury. Uh New Haven that weren't getting that economic boom from all the state agencies. Uh clustered around the the state capital Hartford, he said, made the common sense decision, why not spread this out? And as a former state representative on Beacon Hill, as you will soon realize, uh once the pandemic. Uh tapers off, uh most of our offices are in in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are in the wealthiest zip codes. On Beacon Hill, which is probably one of the wealthiest zip codes in New England. And everything from, you know, Department of Transportation. Uh it's the Department of Housing, uh Department of Transitional Assistance, Health and Human Services. Uh Regisshire Motor Vehicles Headquarters, they're in the back bay, they're in Beacon Hill. Um they're in um uh the north end uh of Boston. And it really struck me at the time, why are we putting? All of these resources in terms of leases, but also the economic effects of. These employees are really quite well compensated. I mean, these are positions that pay anywhere from eighty to a hundred fifty thousand dollars plus. All situated in the city of Boston, which is also experienced the last twenty years. Probably the biggest uh private sector boom and real estate boom uh residential uh on the east coast. And wouldn't it make sense that cities such as Springfield or even uh uh city where I was born in uh the city of Holyoke. Uh or the city of Chickaby, obviously out here in Western Massachusetts. Why couldn't we realize, much like Connecticut did in the nineteen nineties, uh some of that um. Common sense uh uh government and public policy to move some of these offices to. Uh Western Massachusetts. And this really crystallized um with the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh Governor Baker, uh uh what we can obviously say is a positive about Governor Baker is a manager. I mean, that's his background. He manages uh he manages healthcare companies before he became uh governor of Massachusetts. And it's easy to see that the cost of real estate in terms of commercial uh is a lot cheaper than on Beacon Hill. And the idea that we now have forty-four thousand state workers. And twenty thousand of those forty-four thousand state workers are looking for a new. We have something on mute. That uh that could move or re uh reimagine their work uh environment going forward for the next twenty years. But this might be the opportunity for the Springfield City Council and the business community, the Springfield Chamber of Commerce. Really to stand on our own two feet and make it known the advantages that we have out here. In Western Massachusetts. And what really crystallized this for me was during the start of the pandemic. Uh when we had small businesses like Nadine's downtown restaurant. And we remember uh the cookie lady who's who makes hot hot cookies uh in uh downtown as a restaurant. And the cafes and shops, that these state employees really play a vital economic development. To those small businesses. I mean, if you get five or six more people at lunch, that makes a difference, especially uh in in downtown Springfield. Where uh a lot of our restaurants have, we've seen uh coming on. Uh and so when we look at the state um palette of agencies. And there are many. You have administration and finance, you have the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. You have Health and Human Services, you have the Department of Housing, you have the Department of Public Safety. Labor and Workforce Development, Transportation and Veterans Affairs. And underneath those admini- uh executive offices. You have hundreds of agencies that make up this forty-four thousand uh workforce strong. And so. Why not get a little vocal at this time? And so Governor Baker has now hired a consultant for just about a million and a half dollars. Um McKinsey Consultant. They're a world-renowned uh consultant on developing new strategies for workforce. Um uh management. And I think that was a very smart and innovative move by Governor Baker. Uh one that I support. And I'd like to see that the city of Springfield is included in that. And that we uh include some of the voices, not just in the world of elective politics. But outside the world of elective politics and certainly the business community. And we're lucky to have here in the city of Springfield an advocate. Uh for the business community in downtown Springfield, uh who was supported uh through uh. The creative arts community, his work in murals, his work with the Jazz Festival. And his knowledge of the real estate industry and Mr. Evan Placken. And if I could just uh uh turn the meeting over to Evan a little bit, just for a couple of thoughts. On the price of real estate in Boston, the price of real estate in Springfield. Why moving state offices makes sense to to Springfield? What is the benefit? And um as we all do believe there is a benefit and just your thoughts, Mr. Placken.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sean, for inviting me and um I I really appreciate um having. Uh your um your advocacy for for Springfield and for uh this particular issue of of. Commercial office space in Springfield. I think you you you're probably aware that there's at least a half a million square feet of vacancy in downtown Springfield. Um as opposed to Boston, which has uh literally, you know, if less than five percent. Um it may have changed a bit during the pandemic, um but um prior to the pandemic, we did some analysis. And um. I actually wrote an article which um I will reference to you and I and I I'd like for all of you, um Tim and Orlando and Sean. To maybe read it because I think it really um. Points to the fact that that there's this very basic economics of of real estate, um where you have. A huge demand for office space in Boston, especially for high-tech lab space. Which um is going for over a hundred dollars a square foot in Cambridge. That. The the former mayor of of um Boston and the and the president of the uh the Boston Chamber of Commerce. Both said publicly that. We need to move out some of the back office space out of Spring out of Boston so we can make room for these high-tech. Businesses that are employing, um you know, high-paying jobs and bringing in um really good. You know, business where they can't find space right now. There's not enough um. Uh available inventory. And and so it just occurred to me, you know, uh as I was. You know, thinking through this, that if you have, you know, see an average of sixty-five dollars a square foot. For for class A office space in Boston, that is what the state would be leasing. In whether if the state owns the building, they would otherwise, you know, they're charging it to these agencies. But um in any event, that rent, that the 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 market rent in Boston. Is is in averaging sixty-five dollars a square foot and it's going up. In in Springfield, we're at the, we're around eighteen dollars, I'd say as an average between the three or four. Class A office building. When you do the math, just take a ten thousand square foot. Um office space. And you compare what the annual cost of, there's about a half a million dollars in savings annually. That. That. Um that office would save if they were paying for that rent in Springfield. Their occupancy costs in Springfield. Are so much less. And you when you add parking to that and um and and um. You have, you don't have the congestion. In Boston, a year ago was faced with. So much congestion and traffic that, you know, Charlie Baker said that this is an emergency situation. We need to do something. We need to build more housing, more workforce housing, affordable housing. Because first of all, every anyone who's commuting into Boston outside in the suburbs of Boston. They can't get to work before ten o'clock in the morning. Um it just it's just impossible through public transportation or otherwise. Um and and um housing costs are are through the roof um in this around the suburban Boston markets. Uh whereas we have very affordable housing here in Springfield. So everything points economically to benefit. The workforce, the businesses. Um and and when we're talking about millions of dollars, when you take the amount of space that the state leases in Boston. And you do the math on that. Um I I'm thinking, you know, I would tell the consultant, look at doing sales, uh you know, what would these. Properties that are now state office buildings, what if they were either leased to the private sector? And the state would benefit from the from the rent that would go right into the state coffers. Or to or to um capitalize uh and leverage the value of those buildings. Um if the state were to, for example, say, well, we're gonna move out of the um. You know, of one or more buildings in in the Boston area. And that now becomes surplus property to the state. They could sell that to. Any number of developers who would pay a premium for that based on what the rents are. So when you when you look at all of the opportunities, there there's so many that that I can't. You know, begin to tell you in this in this discussion right now, but I can tell you that. Right now at thirteen fifty Main Street, just to use that as an example. We have um almost seventy-five thousand square feet of vacant space. And that is more space or about the same amount of space that was in the entirety of thirty-one Elm Street. Which is, you know, across the park, it's now being redeveloped at a cost of over fifty, sixty million dollars. You know, we we have the infrastructure, we have the resources, we have the um inventory. In Springfield. And I'm sure Worcester could probably make the same claim in Holyoke and Chickaby. Could make it to a lesser degree, but it the in 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 the capital of Western Mass, which I consider Springfield to be. To have the kind of inventory we have of class A and B office space. Um is just remarkable that there aren't more businesses coming here. And so that leads me to another point. And is and that is that there's really no institutional marketing or advertising. Um that I'm aware of with the EDC or our um Office of Economic Development in Springfield. Um I I don't think we're getting the word out enough that we have a talented workforce. We have uh more universities and and higher ed. In 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 um in our region, then I think it's the second highest per capita. Any other region in the country, second to the Boston area. So we have the potential of this workforce that's that's here, that's available. And that is usually the reason why businesses are 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 not coming to Springfield or. Or and and so we we need to look at, what is it about Springfield that? The graduates from these companies are not staying around. Um so that that kind of leads into why I have been such an advocate for making Springfield a. Um looking at the lifestyle and the quality of life and and making it a a place that 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 people want to live, work in. It all ties together into a bigger strategy of of making Springfield um a safe. Clean, fun place to to live and to work. And so that that and I believe it is. And I think with all the colleges that we have, with all our proximity to the airport, our proximity to. To New York, to um the Berkshires, to Cape, I mean, we're we're really the the crossroads of New England. So um geographically, we're we're well positioned. Where um I I mean, there's really, I can't find any downside to being in Springfield. On the cost of living, on the cost of 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 occupancy i- in in Springfield and every everything else. I mean, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars of savings that a a typical state thirty thousand square foot. Occupant, you know, um office space in Boston could save um over a ten-year lease in Springfield. Um it it really adds up to tens of millions of dollars. And and um. So it just, it's it it's. Unbelievable to me that that this is not something that is more on a fast track. Um given that there's really no investment that the state has to make. In doing something like this. It's it's all a win-win. By re right investing in in by moving agencies to Springfield. You're freeing up space in Boston for other businesses and creating value. For the state in those office buildings that no longer need to be state office buildings. And you're moving those employees or hiring new employees or both in Springfield. Which is helping our economy here in Springfield. Um it's it's bringing in high-paying jobs. It's it's uh giving a a huge boost to the downtown. Which will then feed into um new investment in retail, restaurants. And and all of the businesses that have suffered through the pandemic could could would benefit so much by having. A a another um uh you know, population of people working downtown to have. A a an abundance of 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 people. We need the critical mass, basically, to to make Springfield work. Um otherwise, restaurants will constantly need handouts to survive. They won't make it. Um we really need to to um to focus on on some of these these low-hanging fruit, as I I call it. Um to to bring about revitalization to to Springfield. And I think housing is another important piece of this. And I think there's some good things happening in Springfield with the with housing. Um and and market rate housing, the Wiley's Overland Building, the thirty-one Elm Street. Um I think that there needs to be oh um incentives that need to help developers. Create more market rate housing in the downtown for people to live. Um and and Springfield is a very walkable city and has a lot. Um uh you know, the more amenities in that. in that compact little town. When you think about from from City Hall, you could be now because of Pinchon Park is open, you can be at the museums in 10 minutes. You can be in the riverfront in 10 minutes. You could be at the train station in 15 minutes on foot. I mean, where else can you can you say you can do that? So so we need to start advertising it. We need to start marketing what we have. I haven't seen anything that comes close to to really telling the story that needs to be told about Springfield. And we need to get it into magazines like Site Selector Magazine, institutional magazines that developers and brokers look at and and show them, you know, what we have here and why it's so attractive and what the the market rents are here. And move some of the back office call center space out of Boston and and in other places into a city that's welcoming them and has a lot to offer.
Well, if I can follow up on that, those points, those some great points, Mr. Blacken. I do think, my one year in the council thus far, we do need to the city council and the and the city work a little bit stronger, a little bit more hand in hand with the Springfield Chamber of Commerce, Business West, the EDC, to really stand on our own two feet and vocalize what we have to offer here. And I I think those are great resources in the private sector that could be really advocating for this proposal and really demonstrating, you know, to Boston, they they may not think a 200 person agency would have that much of an effect, but it will. We we see the effect that the courthouse has every hour and lunch hour downtown. All these businesses are reliant to some extent on the courthouse. And unfortunately, because of the pandemic, that's going to be moved up to Eastfield Mall. So we're even losing the courthouse and and that economic generator, the people coming to work every day down there. So I do think we need to maybe forge a a stronger partnership here on the council with the Chamber of Commerce and the EDC to help get this message out to the Baker administration. And secondly, you made another great point. So many times we always say, well, we have cheap and affordable and real estate that makes sense here in Western Mass. And there are rebuttal from Boston is, but you don't have the workforce. But I I totally reject that. If if you go down through the agencies of the executive branch of the state of Massachusetts, there are some agencies that make sense to keep in in Boston. Administration and finance people from that agency do meet with the governor face to face. We'll say transportation, obviously, transportation challenges in Boston with the MBTA and whatnot. Officials and and contractors do meet with the executive branch many times face to face. But there are other agencies like Executive Office of Health and Human Services. Within that umbrella, there are there are hundreds, there are thousands of workers that really would fit out here in Western Massachusetts. And there really is no need to have an agency like that i- in Boston. That could be done via Zoom. Those are not agencies where people are having direct conversations with the governor, lieutenant governor, every single day, or the Speaker of the House. And 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 those agencies that make sense to move out here to Springfield. I hope that this consultant, McKinsey and Associates, take under consideration and that we do have the workforce to fill those staffing needs. And that, number two, that economic those individuals coming here to work here in Springfield, they really do have an economic punch downtown. So I I do think those are two valid points. And as we construct this letter to the consultant, we we hope to bring the Chamber of Commerce and EDC on board to really make this case that they've been making for years, that Springfield's a terrific place at the crossroads of New England and that we need to start investing in. And of course, if when you're talking about bringing in private sector, I mean, how is the private sector going to invest in Springfield if they don't see the state investing in Springfield? And and so we need to do that. I I have to say that Governor Patrick really did a favor bringing the University of Massachusetts satellite campus to Springfield. But like to see that expanded in in other such issues like that. So I think you make two great points. And as we construct this letter and bring it forward to my colleagues, I hope to strengthen those partnerships with Chamber Commerce and EDC and also make it known that we do have the workforce for these agencies. And we certainly do have the commercial space. We have tremendous commercial space down down here in the city of Springfield. I we do have Councilor Allen on the line, Councilor Ramos left, he had a meeting. But if Councilor Allen, if you'd like to just chime in with a couple of thoughts, if you have any, or if you just wanted to listen for informational purposes, that's okay too.
Oh, I'm sitting here. I got I picked up a couple of questions. So so Evan, thanks for coming and giving us some data. Could you just repeat the amount of open space there is, commercial space in Springfield? How many square feet was it?
When I last did the the study with the Business Improvement District, it was about 450,000 square feet, which was it was around March of last year. And I know just in my own building at 1350 Main Street, we lost at least 30,000 square feet of tenants since then. So
Really? You said you had 75,000 yourself?
Yes, just in that building alone, we have 75,000. We had Boston Medical, they were on the 13th floor, they moved out. The FDIC, just believe it or not, the FDIC, which is a tenant at 1350, although they don't like to advertise that. They have, they're now moving to Connecticut. So I wrote an I wrote a letter to to Congressman Neal and saying, I'm, I I think it's probably too late for you to salvage this. But why in the world, I I can't believe that the FDIC is saving money by going to Connecticut. They're probably doing some kind of consolidation. But why would that consolidation happen in Springfield? Where we have so many so much space. The the quality of the space, the quality of, you know, I mean, everything is, there's comparatively speaking, I think we we I'm just speaking for myself, we we run a pretty good shop here in in terms of what I do for managing the office building. So I've never had anybody but say wonderful things about the building. So there's it just scratching my head as to why, you know, these agencies would move out. A lot of agencies or or other businesses are downsizing too. So I know that that number of 450,000 is is at least a half a million and maybe more in just the downtown.
Wow. So and and what is the compare the square footage rate in Springfield to Boston again, please?
Yeah. So the Springfield rates, at 1350, our our rate is $16 a square foot. Monarch Place is $18 a square foot. Tower Square is about $18 a square foot. So and then then there's TD Bank is somewhere in in between there. So if you just did a rounding, averaging, you know, we're talking about $17 or $18 a square foot is what the Class A office rates would be in Springfield. And then if you add parking on top of that, to park in Boston, I I'm trying to remember now what it was, but it's it's now here in Springfield, it's about $100 a month. I would say it's five times that, at least in Boston. And if you take public transportation, you're dealing with time delays just because the it's the infrastructure is is challenged there. And people who have to come in from outside the, you know, the the Boston Central Business District, you know, it it's very, very challenging to to even get to work at a reasonable time. So you have all these these factors that that, you know, put Boston, while it's a wonderful city and you know, has many, many great things about it economically. It's not the best quality of life for a lot of people who commute to work and and their the the cost of their housing is is also unaffordable to many of them. And that's why I think I heard a year ago Governor Baker talking about the 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 crisis, basically, that he has for affordable and workforce housing in Boston. And I told him face to face, I told him at 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 a at an event I was at with him, I said, you don't need to build a lot more housing in Boston. You need to move agencies and you need to move, you know, businesses to Springfield. I mean, let's let's look what what's here. We have plenty of housing. I mean, it's tightening up right now, which is a good thing, that the residential market is is really hot right now. And that's great. But, you know, there's still plenty of inventory here. There's there's Springfield is is so much more affordable than than anywhere in the Boston area. So there's so many of these things pointing to to Springfield. And so when you do the math to just to finish your the thought process here. And I and I tried to explain that just on a 10,000 square foot lease in Boston at $65 a square foot on average to Springfield at, say, $18 a square foot. You're you're talking about $450,000 a year in rent that you're paying in Boston versus Springfield. That's so that's for one year. So if you do a 10-year lease, you know, or a five-year lease, just do the math. And you can see that there's there's real money that could be saved by moving offices to Springfield or or relocating. And so that's that's kind of that kind of money make, you know, would make me think twice about why I need to be in Boston. I really
So at 65 is is the average you would say versus 17 or 18?
Yeah, exactly.
And and who's working on this? Like, is this a starting, obviously, this meeting, we're talking about it, but Tim Sheehan and Nancy Creed and their organizations, are they working on this kind of stuff or?
I don't I don't think I don't think the chamber's working on it. Tim Sheehan, I met with him on this very subject. And I also met with the head of the EDC on this subject. There was an there was an agreement that that that, you know, what's his Rick Sullivan, right? Rick was going to do some marketing in the Site Selector Magazine for Springfield. I never saw that come out. If it did, it's too bad because it I I never was aware of it. But but there there needs to be a concerted marketing effort to to make all of the resources and 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 available space and 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 everything that we have in Springfield, it needs to get out there to the general business public that this is, and it needs to be done really well. I think you can make these you could really make a strong case if if someone really did the a little bit more analysis and showed some examples and showed why Springfield is a good option right now.
All right, that's On to that point, in terms of marketing, Evan, I I agree. We we remember a couple of years ago, amazon.com had a competition which to highlight what you have to offer your city or in town. And that was a national competition. But the the city of Springfield did not participate. I know that's a lot of work to put something like that together. And obviously, Amazon is not targeting Springfield or Western Mass at the moment at a high level. But Enfield did
Yeah, yeah, Sean, you're right. Enfield participated in it. In Orlando, who you just had on this call, he he was plugged into that. He he came with the idea that Springfield, I mean, he was looking at that whole thing and and he was part of Springfield being part of the Enfield proposal. I'm not, I don't know how far it went, but
And and so I think part of the fruits of that was Amazon used those data points that Enfield presented. And now Amazon's building a 3,000 employee center in South Windsor. I mean, it's a massive, massive complex. And so as to Evan's point, we need one of these opportunities to advertise what we have to offer here because it does pay off down the road. Again, they're going to build, I believe, two centers and there's going to be about 5,000 jobs in between them. And, you know, why not Western Massachusetts? Why shouldn't those jobs come to the city of Springfield? And I think if we got it got a little bit more aggressive maybe on that plan, they might have chose Western Massachusetts rather than South Windsor.
That's Sean, my battery is about to die on my my iPad. If I lose you
Okay, I understand. Yeah, I we're about to wrap up now. I I just want want to say thank you for everyone's participation, Councilor Allen, Representative Ramos, Evan Plaken. And out of this meeting, we are going to have some concrete policy. And one, we're going to write a letter to the consultant that's doing this workforce study for the state. And then we're going to reach out to the EDC, Chamber of Commerce, Business West, and maybe reestablish a little bit more of energy that we've had in the past in advocating for the city of Springfield. The city of Worcester just got the Cannabis Control Commission, started off with six employees, dollars 200 in downtown Worcester. Why not Springfield? We need to stand up on our own two feet and we need to start punching.
So Sean, instead of a meeting, maybe you follow up with Tim
Yeah, I I think that would be a concrete way to do it. So again, gentlemen, thank you very much for joining us this morning. I think we keep beating the drum on this issue and hopefully something positive and constructive will come out of it.
Great, Sean. Thank you so much for taking a leadership role in this, Sean. It's 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 really probably one of the most exciting things that that we could do in in terms of economic development in the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Thanks, Dean. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.